I've traveled every road in Pennsylvania.
Because I hit record.
I identified.
We'll leave that.
Yeah, yeah. Actually, part of this will probably be gone too. But anyway, if there's something at the end that you didn't want, that you don't want, just let me know and I can, I can cut things. So there we are. So Gopal, did you work out the child situation?
Yeah, no, I mean, it was, um, yeah, it was, it was, when I scheduled this, I didn't realize that there's no school today.
Yeah.
But thankfully, um, you know, I have, um, you know, my, yeah, my, we were able to work it out.
I mean, if a, if a young child wanders in, that's cool.
Yeah, no, well luckily I went to my office, so.
Oh, okay.
Which is why you can see the mess in the guy.
Oh, that's not. That's not a mess. Excellent. How old is your child, children?
I have two boys, they're nine and seven.
It's amazing. How about you, Richard?
Three kids, 27, 24, and 16.
Uh huh. I have a 20 year old and two 17 year olds.
Twins?
Apparently.
Yeah.
If not, if not, something weird happened. How about you, Divine?
21, 19, 17, 16, 15, and 14.
Wow.
Um, yeah.
You do not look old enough to have a 21 year old child. Tell me your beauty care, your skincare regime.
Um, unfortunately, some of that is prison. But, uh, no, I mean, I married into four children.
Oh, I see.
But I, but I, I raised all six, so they're my children.
Yeah.
I don't distinguish, uh, anyone.
Yeah.
I mean.
I hear you.
We make it work.
Yeah, no, my, my brother is like, you know, by blood or whatever, my half brother, you know, my father adopted him and, you know, it's a non-issue. Although I did have this big argument. My father's an immigrant from Spain and his mother was kind of mean about this and like, didn't leave him in her will, which really pissed me off, so. Cause it like, really was like a middle finger to what my dad had, you know, so I was like, that was his decision, not yours.
Wow, yeah.
She was actually a really mean woman, to be honest. Okay, anyway, so this is barge storming. You know, welcome to all of our, our guests, yes, our audience. So I'm really excited today to have a slate of candidates running for local office in State College Borough, which is in Center County. You know, for anybody who's not in Pennsylvania, you know, we have this whole language about local politics that sometimes, you know, I get sort of funny looks, but boroughs are basically towns or cities, usually townships or pieces of, uh, land, usually more rural areas that are incorporated as political entities. So, um, and, and State College, uh, to me, it's always been like so confusingly named because it is where Penn State University is, and so there are no actual colleges. And plus State College, sounds like they forgot a word, like there was supposed to be a word before all of that. It just to me has always been like a very strange. And furthermore, Center County is spelled badly. It's R E instead of E R, and it's not quite in the center. But aside from all of that, welcome. I'll just go around, um, I'll, I'll just ask you guys to say, you know, hello and a word or two, and then we'll get a little bit more bio. So Divine, can we do you first?
Good morning, Divine Lips Call. Thank you for allowing me to be in community with you this morning.
Um, we're so happy to have you. Richard?
Hi, Richard Beaver. Very happy to be here to talk about all these wonderful issues.
Awesome. And Gopal?
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here. It really is an honor to be running with both Divine and Richard.
Awesome. So, um, can one of you all kind of set up for people like, you know, like Borough Council, like, what's the, the election context here? Like, how many seats are open? You all are running as a slate. Anybody want to jump in? I just realized I asked three candidates to jump in. This is gonna be ugly.
It's gonna be ugly. Well, we, we, we disagree on everything, so this is another one. We, there are three seats open, and there are three of us, so isn't that handy? And, um, there are six candidates for the office, one of whom is currently on the Borough Council, Catherine Yapplehook, who was appointed when somebody resigned. And the other is the mayor's, current mayor of State College, and, and another, a former Borough Council member, and then the three of us.
So, uh, the current mayor is running to be on the council?
Correct.
Okay. Well, I, I just really wanted to sit on that because I could imagine for people, you know, mayor's usually, that's its own race. So this person is leaving mayor to come on council. That's interesting. I didn't actually say, I don't know if you guys know, I'm on my Borough Council, um, I'm the vice chair. Uh, or vice president, I don't remember what it's called. No, that's really, you know, it's only like 4,000 people. State College is 40,000, is that right, roughly?
Forty-three, I think, is the number, yeah.
Uh, and the total council is how many? Seats?
Seven.
Seven?
Yeah.
Isn't that funny? There's eight in my borough. I, I actually, I know, it's crazy. There's two reps per ward in those, yeah, even, you know, Divine, I love the look on your face because I, I've been to things, I've been to like local government, like conferences, whatever, and I'm like, it's cool, because I'm like talking to like Helen Gim from Philadelphia City Council, and you know, she has like a staff, and like when I fill out the forms, they're like, you know, who's the staff representative? And I'm like, huh. So, so only seven? And all at large, there's no ward system?
No ward system. It's all at large.
Okay, so, um, uh, I'm gonna make this a little easier. Divine, would you mind kind of telling people the story of like you all as a slate? And then we'll like kind of touch on each of you individually? Is that fair?
That, that's, that's fair. So we are running under, um, a PA United slate, uh, which is a movement, um, throughout Pennsylvania, uh, where we govern with our community, uh, not for them or to them. And we all have come into this, this place of, um, running, uh, collectively on some issues of racial justice, mental health issues, and economic, uh, stability, which we all house under. Like, it's justice, right? Uh, and if you address one of these issues, you essentially will start to address the other two. It doesn't matter which way you go on that, um, conundrum. Like, you literally address one, you address the rest. And so when we all were asked, because we didn't really decide to do this ourselves, we were asked to be of service. Uh, it only made sense, uh, that we put our heads together and figure out how we can collectively bring a progressive voice to State College.
Awesome. So can, can we kind of revisit that, the sort of asked versus deciding? Somebody else want to kind of expand that story a little bit?
Well, I don't think any of us have grand political ambitions. I'll put it that way. I think we all, we all have been activists in different ways and politically active, but I don't, I think I can speak for my colleagues here to say that, uh, seeking political office was not in the cards as of a year ago, maybe even. And so the confluence of events, I think, individually drew us into this, uh, with different emphasis and for each of us, but, um, many commonalities. And then because we were all like, hey, here we are, it just made sense to become a slate.
So, were you gonna say something, Divine?
No.
Um, so, um, uh, was PA United already, did it already exist, uh, in State College? And so was, was that kind of the meeting space either like organizationally or even literally?
It, it, PA United has existed, uh, outside of State College. It formed in State College in kind of the wake of the Bernie Sanders campaign. Because there were a lot of us who, there were a lot of us who volunteered for Bernie, and then once he dropped out of the race, we were all like, okay, now what? And so there was a kind of a coalition of folks who discovered that there was this organization that was also Bernie inspired that already existed. So that's kind of how it came to Center County.
So that's so interesting. In the summer of 2017, I was in State College in a church, I think it was the Unitarian Church, with about 25 or 30 people, and it was Bernie people, and it was billed as an Our Revolution meeting. Were any of you there?
Uh, I don't think so, but if you did anything else in State College with Bernie, I probably was either organizing it or there.
I didn't a lot, um, but, um, it for sure, you know, for me, like I'm, you know, I live in Union County, um, so, you know, if you don't know the area, and you guys do, but I'm, I'm sort of the county next door, literally, but there's a mountain range in between. And so there is actually, I feel like, you know, it's something I think about a lot. There's, in terms of way that the way people understand their region and their community, you know, like between us is kind of the dividing line, I think, the kind, kind of more sort of a little bit more Western PA and Eastern PA. Even though geographically it's only 75 minutes from my house to Trader Joe's, which, you know, I mean, I'll own that, that, that's, that's a drive, I know, well. So, um, uh, but, but part of my point is, you know, um, we're, we're sort of, we'll get back to you in a second, but just to finish this thought, it's like, for me, it's like, um, you know, in 2016, yes, I have to remember, in 16 and in 20, like I, I, you know, I was always supportive of Sanders, you know, in 20, in 2020, kind of as, you know, after Elizabeth Warren dropped out, you know, I was like, yeah. But, um, uh, like it seemed to me very uneven across Pennsylvania, right? Like, so like people who supported him, sometimes you had Our Revolution, and sometimes it became other things, right? In Union County where I am, there's, it's also a college town, there's a lot of people who were inclined to agree with him, but it never materialized, uh, in, in that way. So it's just been kind of an interesting thing for, for me about, you know, how those people had those interests kind of ended up, um, because, because, you know, even if the campaign goes away, the people stay and, and keep doing things. So anyway, um, so PA United, um, was already there. And so, you know, you mentioned racial justice, I mean, let's not beat around the bush. So are we talking about, um, and I've mispronounced his name a few times, because is it Osaji or Sazi?
Osazi. Yeah, I was gonna say, his first name, Osazi, Osagi.
Osazi, Osaki. Was that a specific racial justice, you know, he, he was killed by the police in State College? I've heard some people say murdered. It, was that a, a sort of spark for, for all of you or, or just some of you?
Yeah, it happened.
Or am I totally wrong?
No, no, I mean, I think that's a major commonality. It happened literally across the street, and I'm looking out a window where I can see the apartment building where it happened. So, um, and it was the first time that lethal force was used in State College in 125 or whatever years. And here it was, a black man with mental illness who only had a steak knife, and he was shot in the back three or four times, I can't remember. So, um, yeah, it's a.
And just for context, this is like almost a whole year before George Floyd, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And for me, it's, it's everyday life, right? I, it, it's to a point where my wife and I have dubbed it, uh, trauma porn, right? That we consistently see, uh, black and brown bodies, uh, on, on the sidewalk or being murdered by police. And so I, I made it to the initial protests, uh, the first two with Osazi. And then, you know, I, I fell right back into my daily life. And then Ahmad was killed, and then George Floyd, and then Brianna, and then Osazi's name, like, resurrected right back into the conversation. And it was, it was my children who actually pushed me back into the streets. Because of the six children ages that I gave you, three are boys, right? I have three boys. And let's not forget Sandra Bland and all of the other women who were.
Of course.
Killed by police also. So my black children are at risk of, um, being killed by police. And so it was like, what do we do? Right? And as we talked to our local politicians, and I don't know them to say I dislike them, right? But I dislike the way they handle community concerns. So at a protest, I mentioned that I would run, and someone from PA United was, and, and the crowd, and, and they held me to account. And so, like, we have to be for real about this. You can't talk about racial justice if you have no one of diversity in, in that space. It's, it's just impossible. You, you don't have that lived experience, you know, you're projecting, and that's called privilege.
So, um. Divine, you mentioned the economic justice, um, I think that's how you put it, right? Economic justice piece. So, um, do you all want to kind of talk, are there specific issues or, or policies you'd like to see or, or problems that, that brought that salience? You know, because you, you said, I think racial justice, mental health, uh, you know, take care of mental health, and those are the three, right? Does somebody want to, want to kind of bring that into the conversation? Gopal?
Yeah, sure. Um, you know, the one thing I did want to piggyback a little bit, very briefly on what Divine had mentioned, a little bit about my journey into the slate, was, um, uh, as a former public defender, and I teach at the, uh, Penn State Law. A lot of these criminal justice issues were kind of things that we had talked about litigating in court, had made arguments in various courts, and, you know, to see all of it kind of coming to a head and seeing real movement as a result of political activism, um, from sort of a whole range of people from California to New York, uh, was very, very inspiring. And I think that, um, the issues with the borough, um, there are a lot of like very important words that are spoken, um, that talk about racial justice. But I think that what we really have to do when it comes down to policing is to look very carefully at what kind of details, what sort of proposals are made, and whether it's actually making any kind of change, or is it just sort of lip service? And I think that was what my interest and involvement in.
Yeah.
On, on the, um, the racial justice policing angle come from. But to answer your question about economic justice, and this is something that we, Divine, Rich and I have been speaking about a lot, um, which is that, you know, there's an issue about affordable housing. State College, you have renters, and then you have $400,000 homes, right? Um, and there is like, there's really sort of like no kind of in-between, um, to, in, in, in a place where someone who's working can be able to afford a home and live here. They have to force rent. And there's a real imbalance. There's, that causes a whole host of issues, inequality, and it also causes a lot of budget issues in State College as well, um, because the tax base ends up getting, um, much, much lower than what it could be. So for all of these things, I mean, we kind of see affordable housing and some of the zoning issues going on in State College as the prime economic justice, um, aspect of living in the borough and what we want to advocate for. Because you have more housing and more kind of diverse housing, um, then you have a more diverse set of residents, and it kind of have a whole host of other, other, um, impacts on our community, which are going to be beneficial.
Well, why does having a lot of $400,000 housing and rentals, I mean, to me, that sounds like a really tasty tax base, being purely mercenary?
Well, it's because, uh, the homeowners are in the minority when it comes down to it. So out of the 40,000 people that you have in State College, there's only going to be a small, I mean, you know, I don't know what the exact number is, but it might be only about 30 to 40% who are homeowners. And plus, you know, I mean, even if you were gonna look at it from a, and we do not look at it from a mercenary point of view, we, we look at it as a fairness point of view too. But even if one were to look at it something from a mercenary point of view, just those numbers by themselves, um, don't really add up, and it's a constant budget issue for the borough.
Yeah, the, the problem is there's no growth in the tax base. It's actually shrinking. So there's a kind of a desperate, it may be too strong a word, but a desperate attempt to figure out how to make up for that. Thus, the high rises downtown, which can have good and bad elements, we've, we've discussed, are some differences about that, but that, those things are happening because of the, a shrinking nature of the tax base in State College. So like Gopal was, you know, alluding to, if you zone for multifamily homes, for instance, in these neighborhoods, you not only increase the tax base, you diversify the neighborhood, you make it affordable for people who work in the borough but cannot live in the borough. So you have these diverse neighborhoods, and all of a sudden, this, the fear of the other starts to go down, we start to live together in peace and harmony. I mean, I know it sounds, you know, idealistic, but it really can happen, and it is happening. And that's the other thing is, you know, we're, we're not just trying to figure these things out in a vacuum. There are communities that are doing this, Berkeley, California, for instance, who are, who rezone many of their neighborhoods for multifamily homes, and it's completely changed, um, the face of those neighborhoods and made it more affordable to live there.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I, I see that. And, and Gopal, just to follow, follow up, maybe is, um, the, the, there's sort of two issues, if you agree with this, there's two issues. One is, you know, what is this sustainable tax base for a borough? You know, we sort of joke about mercenary, and, um, I, I think we always, of course, like equity has to be integrated with it, but it's also this thing which, you know, all of you all, like most of us are all fiscally conservative in the sense that we're like, you know, we want to do these services, we want to make sure they meet their purpose, right? We want to make sure it's paid for equitably, like in a way, that should be a non-issue. So this like, like it really irks me when, you know, I've been called like a social, like locally, I've been like, oh, you know, you believe in socialist park policy? And I'm like, a park is socialist? What the hell are you talking about? You know, I just, I think, I think we ought to be able to pay for it consistently. Like, what, what are you talking about? You want private parks? Anyway, um, uh, so, um, so, so sorry, the one thing is the, the rate of homeownership, right? It seems, seems like when you have very, very low, like you said, lower rates of homeownership, it's, it, you know, you just kind of tend to not have the same set of people who have the same sense of buy-in. And I'm not trying to throw renters under the bus, like that's obviously an important part of people being able to have housing, but sort of from the community perspective, is that something like, you, you want more homeowners and more evenly distributed? So you don't end up with, um, you know, kind of, um, renter. I've also been for ghettos or whatever, right? And then, and then the $400,000 homes, and then, so, so that's one issue, right? And then a sustainable revenue plan is the other. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, that's, I think that sounds fair.
I, I, yeah, right, right. So real quick, Divine, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, but even, even with the renters, right? Because I've, I've rented in State College for the last 12 years since I've been here. Well, you, you have to look at the, um, the employment market, right? And the livable wages, uh, they don't match. They, it just don't equate. I've, I've been evicted in State College because it's like, you, 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 you just have to budget between like, how much food am I getting? How much, am I going to pay my car note? Or am I going to pay this $1,500 rent off $10 an hour?
Plus, I'm gonna bet that State College's school district is better than others in the area, right? So there's this kind of school district gentrification, this happens in where I live. So the, the, the homing, the housing prices in that school district are probably higher. So, you know what I'm saying, Divine? So that pushes that up, so then rental, rental housing is more expensive, uh, and then wages are artificially, well, artificially depressed. So, so that gap keeps increasing. Not to mention, I think this is important, and, and I'll just sort of, you know, you know, my own whatever bias or privilege, is I feel like renter often sounds derogatory, right? Like, I don't know, I just feel like, you know, um, uh, it just sort of sounds like sort of, you know, transient people who are like sort of moving through, so. I mean, my, yeah, sorry, did you want to say something about that?
You're good.
Well, the one thing I wanted to clarify though is that with regards to the school district, State College kind of has a little bit of a weird situation. Because the borough is like one small part of the pie. The school district represents a much bigger pie.
Right.
So in fact, the school district ends up being, um, quite a bit, that's actually more financial resources. I think its budget is actually, it's bigger than the borough.
Right.
So I mean, and so I mean, you know, so.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I mean, I just wanted to clarify that one point in terms of how.
Right. And to sort of maybe clear, sort of add more clarity, I, I was saying that like I'm imagining that like in the regional local housing market, people move there, and so that pushes those housing prices up. So housing prices keep going up, which pushes renting up. Like, I'm kind of saying that like, in, in, maybe, maybe this is too general, but like, you know, we have a national political economy that's kept, uh, wages, you know, below poverty, while we have local gentrifying housing markets that push up housing. So the purchasing power of an already small amount of wage, Divine's like nodding so much. So, and that's the thing that people don't really realize, I think, you know, and I'm not throwing any shade at them, but it's like there are two different economics sort of, um, sectors here, and, and the conflict is what you said, Divine. And thank you for saying that you've been evicted, right? Because that's the kind of thing that's supposed to be a shame thing, and it's not, right? In, in our stupid America, it's like, if you got evicted, it must be your fault.
Yeah, I mean, and, and that's one of the things that, um, I, I know, especially in our group, I, I'm vulnerable as hell, right? I just, I, I have no other, um, I mean, if I, you take pride out of the conversation, um, and like, connect, right? I don't, I don't have the same lived experiences, uh, some people, but I have the same lived experience as a lot of people, all right? And so when we take my experience, Rich's experience, Gopal's experience, uh, because they come from different backgrounds as well, and so their experience is similar to their demographics. But when we, uh, build on the same collective, uh, issues, and we, we look at things that we want to build upon, uh, that, that brings us a, a whole sense of community. And so those are the things that I like to push forward or think about, where it's like, I, I don't need to have all of the answers, I can learn them, but when I'm surrounded by folks who do, right?
Yeah, listen, Divine, I mean, having gone from being a very active person and following politics to, you know, I started in local governance in 2017, I guess. Like the things that I have to vote on and know about, you know, and I'm, I'm the kind of person, I'm super overeducated, you know, I have a master's and a PhD, and I'm like, what? What, what, what is, you know, I'm trying to think of a good example, um, you know, I'm like, I'm saying like, what, what is a cross lateral gas pipe wet? So, and I think that there's kind of, um, uh, you know, this is the kind of thing we'll do on this podcast, and you don't have to answer this, but I, I feel like there's kind of a tension, because even running for a very local office, you have to present as confident, knowledgeable, right? But how could you be?
I mean, if I don't know it, I don't know it, right?
Right.
When the people who are in office, I don't believe you all came in with that knowledge. You still had to get on these committees and learn it.
Richard wants to jump in, go ahead.
Well, a great example happened last night. We were on a candidate's forum with.
Oh, yeah, the lead.
Voters.
Yeah.
Yeah, which was great. And, um, but there are so much inside baseball, there's so much jargon in the, built into the question. There was very little chance that all, that, that those of us who have not been in the system would have known exactly what they were talking about. And they talked about a rents ordinance, basically to kind of limit the Airbnb influence.
Oh, I'm sure for State College, right? Because you got Penn State, yeah.
But, but, but the way the question was phrased, there was no explanation of what that ordinance was, what, how it, what was stated. But because Ron Filippelli, mayor, was there in the discussion, and Catherine Yapple was there in the discussion, they just, they were able to launch into what they thought was, you know, the right thing to do about that, which is fine, except it wasn't explained. So here, you know, they're talking and I'm Googling, you know, to, I assumed I kind of got it, and from listening to what people were saying, but that's, you know, that's the kind of thing that was going on.
Well, and I mean, and I mean, and I think that, and I think that the other thing about that is, is that, and Divine had pointed this out, um, yesterday, which is that this information is accessible, right? I mean, it's simply, it's not like it's, um, you know, and someone is training me to go ahead and, um, cut into someone else's brain or something, right? Or to do open heart surgery. I mean, this is going to be a simply a matter of, there's a learning curve, and it's a learning process, and that is something that a lot of people can do. But if you end up using experience as the sole marker, and how well you can answer obscure questions about, you know, COG or about the, uh, the, the rental department, I mean, you know, I think, you know, it's, um, it, it, it's sort of, it's not a very valid marker in terms of how someone would govern, um, or, you know, be on the council. And the other thing which I think is great about our slate is, is that our whole, our whole, um, kind of thing, right? Is that we're running as a community. We're running not as like individual saviors coming in and like, you know, saving things. It's like, you know, dialogue and talking to people, talking to each other, and talking to the community.
See, the thing is, e- equity is not a, a talking piece, right? Now, you can't say equity inclusion and say, well, I have more experience in equity inclusion, and you don't include the, everyone who's going to be impacted, right? That's not equity, and it's not inclusion, right? It's, I have this experience, you don't have it, so you're excluded. But I have different, we have different experiences, and we all have different learning curves, um, that, that, it doesn't make sense to me, right? Um, and if we want to be equitable, you have to be equitable even in the knowledge that's presented and the way that we govern in that knowledge and, and the community, right? So.
I really, I want to come back to, go ahead, Richard, I want to come back to it.
Well, I just sort of, you know, kind of echo and expand on that, which is to say, you're bringing in the actual voices, as opposed to saying, I'm going to go out and talk to those voices, and then I'm going to come back and do whatever I want, or do what I think is right, or whatever. Or it could be a good thing that you go out and talk and that changes your mind, but they're still not being heard. Their voice is still not included in the conversation, just because you went and talked to somebody. It's better than not, but it's like, what we're talking about is bringing people into the conversation.
Right. So, um, I, I, I just kind of wanted to, to, to sort of, um, sort of zoom in a little bit. Divine, as you were talking, like, this sort of like image kind of crystallized in my, in my mind, and I'm so appreciative of what you were saying, because, you know, I, you know, I hear the words diversity and equity inclusion, I say them. But what I was getting, let me see if this is, this, this relates to what you were saying, it's like, you know, uh, let's just stick with equity. I mean, equity is like something we can, it's sort of like an outcome, we can like look at and, and measure really at the end of a process. But like, it's community and conversation that brings all the different people into it, right? So, because, because what you said is really great, like equity is not an individual's experience. Equity is something that you can participate in and then like celebrate ideally. I'm, I'm sort of saying this out loud, but is that, is that kind of casual you were talking about?
Of course. Um, and, and you can't have, um, can't have. can't have the same people, right? Making the same decisions and call it equitable. That's not equitable, right? That, that's not even diverse. When, when we recycle the same experience, you don't leave room for new experience to come. You don't leave room for new thought processes and new, um, you don't leave room for growth, right? Um, and then you also exclude those who want to participate, right? I, I've only been able to observe, um, our borough meetings. And it's limited. It's limited to three to four minutes. You say your piece and then it's combative depending on what you say, right? Or it's, well, here's this budget thing. Maybe we'll get to it this time. Maybe we want, oh, we'll listen to this really drawn out presentation. And it's like, okay, what if I have not followed that yet? Right? Can we have some kind of background to that? And it's just, even how we disseminate information is not, um, equitable, right? A- a- and so it frustrates me, uh, and, and a lot of the times I wear my frustration on my face. But it frustrates me when it's like, well, we're treating this as if everyone has access, right? Accessibility is, is important, right? Because we can have this conversation, but someone may have a hearing impairment and, um, they're, they're looking for transcripts, right? Or, or it's like, how do we make everything accessible and equitable at the same time? And right now I don't see that either or, uh, and, and our local government.
So, uh, quick little anecdote that I probably shouldn't say, but, um, when, um, I start, got involved in my borough council because I was filling a seat that, um, was, was empty, you know, that, that process, somebody moved out. And I was in the, a meeting and there were like three, three of us from my word and they, you know, they asked us questions. And then they went on with the meeting and they were talking about, you know, this street, that street, all that kind of insider stuff. And like, Go Paul, like you were saying, we have county GIS. So actually compared to, you know, like 30 years ago, or even 10 years ago, maybe it was, it was kind of easy for me to get on my phone. And, and so I was like zooming in and following along. They didn't appoint me, which kind of, you know, bruised my ego a little bit. And then I heard, and I had some friends on the council time, I heard they were like, well, you didn't seem very serious because you were looking at your phone, like Facebooking or something. We were talking and I was like, are you kidding me? I was like, hey, why would you assume that? Like, it was such a like, kind of old crotchety, like, well, he's not paying attention. And I was like, I was more engaged probably than the other ones. And so that irked me. So I ran and beat the person they appointed, who was a nice guy, but I, you know, so, you know, there's a, uh, there's a balance. I mean, I mean, I, I, we'll have another conversation about sort of ego and ambition and, and like the rhetoric of I'm a public servant. Of course you are, right? But I think it's a little misleading. Now I just said it. It's a little, or, or this is especially true at higher office when people are like, well, he seems, he seems ambitious and he's running for president. And I'm like, yeah, you think? Or she, especially she, I'm like, good for her. She should be ambitious. Like we sort of do this like collective myth making that like, the only people who should serve are the ones who absolutely never wanted to. And I'm like, if you think of another job where like, it's the people who should do it, or the ones who never wanted to do it, it's a little weird, isn't it? Right?
Well, plus that, uh, that, that, that angle has so many sort of like race and gender issues with that. You know? So I'm.
Yeah, yes. You mean for women, as I was thinking about the women part, right? That.
For women, but yeah, yeah.
But also for people of color, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so, um, do you all want to talk a little bit about the, the state of the race? Like I didn't even ask, is, is the primary where it's all at? In state college? Right? Like, I mean, the other people running are all Democrats?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's all, everybody's on, there's no Republican. Well, actually, oh, he didn't, he, I think there was, I, or is, I just, he wasn't at the, um, the forum last night.
Right. I mean, it is, but I think it's like state to the boroughs, like 80% registered Democrats.
Exactly. But there's, but you know, there's a spectrum of Democrats, just because you're saying it's, yeah. So that's right. That's, that's where it is. But you know, of course there's no polling. We have no idea, you know, like we have no idea. We do know that we have knocked on over a thousand doors with, we have over a hundred volunteers. We've had more than.
A hundred volunteers?
Hundred and eighteen.
Oh my God, I'm so jealous. Wow. How did that come, come to happen?
Through PA United and our own, you know, efforts to, but there's a, there's definitely a hunger for something different.
That's what I think it really is a sign of. There are a lot of people that don't want the same recycled folks to be back in office. Um, not to sort of cast aspersions on them. I mean, you know, I think they've done a lot of very valuable service, but you know, it's three out of seven seats. And there's a great, um, there's a great deal of importance to have new and fresh diverse voices on council. And I think there are a lot of people in the community that really want it. I think in our informal discussions, canvassing and talking to voters, there's definitely a lot of hunger for it. And so that's been reflected in terms of like, you know, we have these community events. And it's really remarkable. And I mean, you know, not having run for office, it's kind of remarkable to hear people say, oh yeah, I'm here to advocate for Rich, Divine and Go Paul, you know, it just is still kind of.
That is an amazing platform not name, because it's like, is it like, uh, is it a slogan for like, uh, an investment firm? Or is it like, uh, a cool fusion? Is it like, it's sort of a, I was like, is it like a fusion restaurant with like a dance club? I don't know.
If you vote for Divine and Go Paul, you get rich.
Yeah. I always kind of wanted Go Paul comma, Rich and Divine.
And ironically, I have no preference and that's probably why I ended up at the top.
Well, you've got to put divinity at the top. I mean.
We do, yeah. Well, actually, I think that it actually makes a lot of sense this way, because if you put divine, rich and Go Paul, divine, rich, Go Paul, then it sounds like those are adjectives modifying Go Paul. So you have to have Go Paul in the middle. It has to be divine, Go Paul and Rich. I think that's the only way.
So, um, are the, are the other four, is it four running? So there's seven people running for three seats.
Well, we, we think there are seven. There were only six there last night.
Right.
There is one Republican candidate. So I think he's one unopposed.
Right. Just so, just, cause you know, if so, I mean, probably most people listen to this are pretty up on politics, but you know, so in the primary, the Democratic Party gets three spots for the fall ballot. And we're saying that there are six people who are registered as Democrats who are competing for those spots, you know, in the next race. Um, and who knows what, you know, the Republican, if he's there, if he or she is there, that's probably, you know, they're automatically on the ballot because there's potentially three spots for Republicans. So, um, are the, are the other three who are competing for those, um, spots on the Democratic primary ballot, are they a slate or, or are they very different?
Two, two of them are a slate. Ron Filippelli, the current mayor and Catherine, uh, Doc, Kathy Doppel, uh, she, she's, they, they are running at, did I say it right?
It's a dollar, Kathy Dollar.
Dollar, dollar, Catherine, yeah, sorry. Anyway, Dollar and Filippelli are running as a slate. The former mayor and, and, and Dollar was previously on Borough Council.
So, um, you know, let's, let's get into this. Did they run as a response to y'all?
No, they ran in response to, they think, um, uh, the reaction to the Osazi shooting was too extreme. And I think they haven't said this, but it, as so much has said it, that they are concerned that it's going to get pushed too far the other direction and they want to keep the status quo. Interesting, last night they must've said between the two of them, five, six or seven times, how great state college is doing. They've got the gold star in this and a gold, uh, platinum this and a gold that. And you know, I kind of came away from that saying, well, then why are you running? It's perfect. You don't need, you know, what are you, what is, what's, what's the, what's the issue? And so it has to be to keep the status quo, you know, to not let it go too far in, in any direction.
I don't know why they're running together, to be honest. I, I mean, I would, I would wouldn't hesitate to have a conversation with them. Uh, so I'm all about conversations and, and, and flushing things out. What I do understand, uh, is that when you see a force of change coming, you do whatever you can, uh, when you oppose that change, uh, you do whatever you can to, to keep that balance. One of the things that I, I've consistently read, particularly at Center Daily Times or, uh, is, is that how this slate is trying to un, uh, what, what was the word? Destabilize our community.
Ah.
I was like, I'm sorry, what? How, how are we trying to destabilize the community? I'm a local activist, literally, we don't hide that. Um, Rich is a small business owner. Go Paul teaches at the university, uh, at the law school. Where's their destabilization there, right?
Well, it also presumes that things are stable.
Exactly. Um, so I, I'm always confused in that language where people are making us out to be, uh, and they're nemesis, right? And I'm just like, wait, and I, and I said it last night and I'll say it again. I am not sure, we're not your opposition. We're your neighbors who are addressing these, uh, critical concerns of ours. And instead, it's like, well, you're trying to disrupt things and you're trying to, you know, knock everything off its kill. But I'm uncomfortable. And so because I'm uncomfortable and I want you to help make us comfortable, that's making you uncomfortable. And so we're trying to destabilize everything. That's unfortunate.
I, I, you know, I wanted to kind of, you know, flesh that out because, you know, if anybody's listening who's in, um, uh, state college, like they probably understand this innately, but I think for, you know, other people, um, you know, generally this part of Pennsylvania, rural Pennsylvania, like if you look at the county level, although center county is often the exception, but you know, people see this Republican and all of that, but this really is, um, a small city that politically is dominated by people identify as Democrats. Um, is this an accurate statement? And then within that, we have a change slate, if I can call you that. And you have, uh, a, a status quo slate. And what about the third one? Where are they in this? The, the, I don't, you didn't say their name.
Right. The current, uh, Yapple, who is a current, um, council member. And I would say she's maybe in the middle. I don't, I, it's, you know, I don't know that she would, you know, say strongly one or the other. Uh, but both, both Filippelli, Filippelli and Dollar, so they were, they had no intention to run until the current situation.
You said that before. Could you just, it, it sounds a little vague to me. What's the current situation? Osagi?
That, 320 Coalition, and they say post COVID. They're, they're really concerned about the budget. They're really concerned about money and.
Congress just gave them millions of dollars, so they can, they can.
Well, exactly. That, and you know, like as if, you know, we don't, as others couldn't understand numbers and understand how, you know, a budget works. And, um, so anyway, so I think they're, they're just.
You're a business owner.
That's, that was kind of my, that was kind of.
I mean, you guys are like a, a league of heroes, you know, you've got, uh, a public defender, a business owner and Divine, you know, you're, you're in community. You didn't say what you, you know, how you're putting food on the table.
Um, so I do prison education work, uh, with the Restorative Justice Initiative at Penn State. I'm, I'm also, I'm a full-time student, so I'm trying to finish off my undergrad and then go to law school.
Awesome. Oh, I'm really, I'm glad you said that, restorative justice. And I'm sorry if we kind of skipped over that, but it sounds like that says a lot, that forms a lot about what we were saying about community and conversation and dialogue and, you know? And it's kind of, just off the top of my head, normal politics is about who wins and who loses. And you're bringing a whole different perspective, right? Which is, you know, where are we going together?
Exactly. Um, and that, and, and, and that's what I love about our slate, um, because that's always uh, our, our guiding decision. How do we do this together collectively? Uh, that's what PA United has, uh, also helped us, uh, articulate. How do we do this as a movement, as a community? Because again, we were asked to run for these offices, um, for this office. I, I was minding my business, literally, um, trying to finish my schooling, uh, and getting ready for my LSAT, uh, which is in June. But I can think of a hundred other things that I would much rather be doing than running for public office.
Say that.
There's a state, there's a, there's a state of affairs that are taking place that has summoned us to this space, right? Obviously there's something wrong, right? And if we continuously pretend that something is not wrong, we continue, I, I mean, status quo, I, I like the word, I mean, but, and that's what it is. But why do we have to stay there, right? If you put thousands of thousands of people in a street protesting and your response is, oh, you defaced the, our property with chalk.
Chalk? Oh, forgot.
Yeah, it's chalk, right? We, we, we totally, um, miss the fact that there's bodies dropping, right? Um, how do we become so immune to what's actually going on that we focus on chalk? Right? Oh, our local businesses are, are enraged because they have chalk. We can get a bucket of water and throw it on a damn chalk and wash it away, right? We can't wash away the fact that a parent is not going to see their child again, or a child is not going to see their parent. And, and, and that's how those responses sound when members of 320 Coalition talk to our current borough. That's how it sounds when, when you have 4CR or some of the other organizations who stand on the corner and provide food to our unhoused population. And yet there, you don't have this, 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 uh, piece of paper that says you can feed someone. So why don't you feed them, right? If, if, if we were feeding our unhoused population, better yet, if we were housing our unhoused population, we wouldn't have to feed them on a corner of, uh, Beaver and, and Allen.
Which is the, the main intersection, right downtown?
Right. Uh, right by the library. So if, if you, if we did those things as a static, status quo, we wouldn't be running, right? If you did your job, we wouldn't be here, right? We would be teaching theater or teaching law or finishing up our degrees. We wouldn't be here if people were doing their jobs. So don't talk to us about experience. Hey, obviously there's something wrong with your, your idea of experience that has drawn us together.
So, um, do you all want to say just a, a little bit about like, um, how the, you know, like how you're, how you're pushing the campaign? You've got all these volunteers. You said there's a lot of door knocking. Do you feel like you have a good plan to get to, you know, 51%? The win number? Go Paul?
Yeah, no, I mean, I think it's a, it's a really good plan. Um, you know, you always feel like there's not, not enough hours in the day to be able to do and to do the kind of outreach that you always want to do. Um, however, you know, um, this is one of the beautiful things about working together and also having a lot of, um, young committed energy and not even young, but just really committed energy. Um, and it ranges, our volunteers have ranged from like 15 to 70, 75 in fact. And so, um, it really is, um, you know, I think we have, um, I do feel like it's, we were on to something as a matter of part of this kind of circumstance. And so I'm not going to say it has anything really. I don't think it's, you know, I don't like to think of it as something personal to me at least, um, that I think it's really is this, this movement and desire to sort of have, um, greater change and greater accountability. And, and I think the one thing that people are also realizing as they are, we're sort of challenging this experience narrative is, is that, um, we also love our community. I mean, that's the reason for why we're running is because we do care about state college. We do care about the borough. We don't want to like, see the budget go up in flames. We don't want to like, you know, tear down what is, what is great and beautiful on it. We just want to make it better and more inclusive.
Right. Um, for sure. You know, is registering new voters something, you know, like traditionally campaign people will be like, oh, it's a waste of money. Don't do it. Because, you know, it's expensive. I don't know if you guys have run into this, like, I mean, I've helped with sort of state and national campaigns, but I'm just curious, like, you know, if you think about like the, the electorate that you want to have show up on the 18th and vote for you as a slate, um, uh, you know, uh, you know, are you hoping to get new voters? Are there people who vote less frequently and you're trying to reach them? Are you trying to convince regular voters? You know, you think they may want to vote for the status quo?
Well, I, I think we're trying to get every vote, but you know, the reality is to go out and make it known that we're actually running and that there is a slate and that there is a vision and there is a platform. And when that's, when we talk to people and explain that, then there's usually a positive outcome there. They don't necessarily say right then they're going to vote, but whereas it feels like some of the. They don't necessarily say right then they're going to vote, but whereas it feels like some of the others are just going by name recognition, you know, but we're, but, and I don't blame them for that, but we're out there trying to trying to make known not only who we are, but what we, what our vision is, what our platform is, and most people agree with the platform.
Is there like, uh, I, I think I saw a button, is it divine, divine Go Paul and Rich? Is the button, is there like, is there like a slogan or a motto, or a, besides the name, and the name, of course, you got to have the names, but you know, for a better.
We have, we have probably the coolest yard signs, mainstream yard signs.
Tell me about it, do you have one handy?
Um, I, you know, I, I kind of wish that I could, um, I don't know.
I might track, I can track it down and put the picture.
No, it's like, you know, this is, this is where the energy, and as Rich had mentioned, is, is that, um, you know, it's for us, our strategy is we get people to know who we are, they're going to end up voting our way, and it's simply a matter of like having those conversations, but our yard signs are pretty distinctive because they're hand drawn.
Oh.
Um, and then put on by a high school student, a very talented high school student who's working with us.
And it's real.
Is it, is it the hand drawing of the three of you kind of in profile?
Yes.
That is really nice, really like it, and that is such a constrained art space, you know, because I've been on, you know, people like, what should our colors be? How about red and blue? It's like, if I see one more thing called Keystone, I had this joke, you guys probably know Nick Gressley, right? Um, so we were talking about like a, kind of a new thing, and I, he was like, what should it be called? We were just kind of dreaming things, I was like, how about, you know, the Keystone Common, the Keystone Commonwealth Better Together, uh, We Stand Up Foundation of a Better Tomorrow, right? Anyway, yeah, that's great, um, so if people hearing this want to help, um, and I'll add this to, you know, the, the first show notes, um, but you, you want, you know, is there, uh, what would be the best way for people to help if they want to help?
Come out, knock doors with us, um, volunteer to the slate. One of the things that I, I appreciate about our slate is that we are in the community. We are knocking doors, we were talking to the community, so we our, our platform is, is a living, breathing platform, it's not set in stone, right? It's how do we take all of the information, uh, that we gather on our canvassing uh, and make collective decisions, what by incorporating all of these, these conversations? Uh, and, and I, I believe that's how you govern anyway, it's just how I feel about it. Uh, and that, that falls into our model, so to answer your question, it's, uh, reinvest, reimagine, and renew uh, what it means to be in State College, right? Um, and so that, that, that's, that's how.
Reinvest, reimagine, and renew, okay?
Yes. Um, come out, knock doors with us, let, let's build community.
Um, can I tell you, sorry, another reason I really like that, because I also feel like, at a subtle level, um, uh, it is an answer to, what does defund mean, but you don't even have to say the word, right?
Yeah, and, and that, that has been, uh, what, to answer your other question, how do we get to the fifty one percent? A lot of people dig our slate, uh, and, and we get hung up at defund, right? But I don't want to defund the police, that, that literally means reallocate. Um, and, and, and that's, it's not really as nuanced as we're trying to make it hope to be. Um, except that you are associating defund with protest, and reallocation is something you say in a boardroom. Right, like, that, that's the biggest difference, um, we don't want to destabilize our police. But if we have a budget for sixty-two officers, we only have fifty-six, um, employed, there's a surplus, right, use that, our community is safe with those fifty-six officers. Use that surplus to fund other programs, that, that's reallocation, that's what you do with a budget, right? It's just sitting there collecting interest when we can provide services if we reallocate that money. We don't have to dip in our reserves, because now the thing is, we use our reserve money, we didn't have to. Right, we could use other funds, and so now we're replacing money that should have never been touched to begin with, uh, for whatever reason, right, but when we could have dug into certain, uh, pools of, of resources. So I, I'm gonna stop right there, because I can go on all day.
No, that's, that's good, that's good, um, is, there's a website or a phone number or something that we can add for people to?
P A United dot com.
Okay.
Dot org.
I don't know, I, I can, I, I feel like I need to do this, I also feel like people that's new podcast are very rarely going to write it down, because they're, you know, doing the chores or driving. So, uh, you know, we got the name out there, P A United, um, State College, I'll add it to the links, is there a phone number to call or an email to, send an email to?
There, well, there, we each have our own Facebook page too.
Okay.
So.
I'll add that too.
Yeah, and, um, but the P A United dot org, that would get you to all of the information, way to donate, how to volunteer, all of it's there.
And we also have a Facebook page, it's Central P A United, that's kind of like a clearinghouse for all of our candidates, that's a public page. So anyone that just Googles Central P A United, he is going to find out everything about us.
So you guys have got a good slogan, before you told me what it was in my head, I was thinking, we didn't even say Happy Valley, but for people who don't know, that's like this, this moniker for, um, I don't know the exact boundaries, I mean, it's, it's State College and area, it's not the whole of Center County, I don't think, is it Happy Valley? But like, you know, maybe, uh, uh, let's, let's make a Happy Valley for everyone. Uh, maybe, you know, ne- next time around or something, do you like that? That's free, I won't charge you for it, huh?
Black Caucus, uh, Black Caucus, uh, typ- typically starts off on their dialogues, and Happy Valley is not happy for everyone.
Mm hmm.
Right, and if it's not happy for everyone, then that slogan fits right in the place.
Mm hmm, that's excellent, thank you, um, all, good luck, um, uh, you know, I, uh, you know, I love where I live, so I don't want to say I wish I was living in State College, I could vote for you, but, you know, um, uh, i- it is a really important election, your election, I think, is really important in terms of what it says about um, sort of linking up the, the street energy from last summer and from other things too, with how that translates into local, you know, local change. Um, uh, and the other piece is, you know, I don't know if you know this, but, you know, in my experience, State College is often held up, you kind of mentioned this as a model. Right, and so I, I suspect that there's some, there's some pride, and, you know, there are these networks and spaces of, for local officials and, you know, State College, I mean, this is true for a little bit for where I live too, Lewisburg, you know, um, like, we've been pretty effective at getting grants, for example, from state agencies, and it's like, well, you know, we have a good reputation, um, and I, I said a couple of times, I've been like, yeah, but I think this other borough probably needs more help than us, like, um, but, um, uh, and even with the police thing, um, now I've opened up another can of worms, but like, I, I, from what I know, because we have some policing issues about funding where, where I am, um, the State College Borough Police, you know, um, sort of sells its services to other townships around you, so I, I wonder, you know, um, you know, maybe we can talk about this more later, but is there, is there some money flows that people are a little bit antsy about if you start talking about shrinking your, your Borough Police Department?
It's funny, we're not really talking about shrinking it, we're talking about not expanding it.
Mm hmm.
That's right.
And yes, I think you are correct about that, there is concern about the wider implication, but we're not talking about shrinking it.
Yeah, because there's this larger issue that's out there, which is, um, all these little townships that, you know, should only have five hundred people, some of them now have thousands, and they get state, um, state police coverage, and they're free riding, the thing that gets me is they're often voters and people who are like, oh, I don't want to pay higher taxes because of those freeloaders, and I'm like, but you are freeloaded off of all the state taxes to get your state police, because you don't want to pay for local police, so can we talk about that, please? Um, and while I'm on a roll, can we talk about the fact that you sneer at, at, uh, you know, where I am, like, they're like, oh, the taxes are so high in Lewisburg, I'm like, yeah, and we have the downtown where you come to shop, dine, and work, and you say you love this place, but we're paying for the cute downtown that you like to come visit at from your, you know, suburb. And all of these issues are so fractal, right, these are the same things, I think, in San Francisco and in New York, but, you know, and people assume that we're all living, you know, on farms and cutting down trees out here, and I'm like, what are you, what are you talking about? Like, I've just gone off on a, and now I'm doing it again, but I don't know if you know, you know, James Carville is, you know, this very important, you know, he ran Clinton's campaign, and he coined this thing about Pennsylvania, I won't even say it, um, that it's Philly and Pittsburgh, you know, with this other thing in between, because I've literally decided this is my life's work, is to undo everything he, he created with that, right? Um, and because, I mean, it's not that the phrase itself is that important, but it just encapsulates all of these issues about rural and urban and, and race and community and coming together, um, and, and sort of myopia, I mean, literally, rural is defined as not urban. It's not a thing that is, it's just a thing that it isn't.
That's the beauty of P A United, in my opinion, is, is that they are going into places um, but in a way are kind of, I'm not going to say neglected, maybe you could say neglected by the Democratic Party.
No, no, Go Paul, one hundred percent, trust me.
That is just kind of.
Zero money is spent by the state party on, on these areas.
And so whereas like here, you know, where it's really kind of inspiring, because I mean, in a way, we have the luxury of being in a place that is, we can talk to voters and be like, hey, you know, we have this dialogue, people really kind of understand a lot of when, we just need to have those conversations. And I have oftentimes felt like we have enough conversations, we win the election, we win the election. Um, and I think in a lot of other places, though, it's like, you know, there, it might be like you're having a conversation just to be able to have a conversation. Or maybe you're having a conversation to have a conversation, like, a year from now to have a conversation, you know, and I mean, and so I think, but the fact that they are investing in that now, it's a powerful thing, and it's really, I'm, I'm very proud to be a part of it, I really am.
Awesome. Um, have you, la- last question, you know, have you been, have you been doing enough of like campaigning that you've been, you know, forced to eat a lot of things that either aren't healthy or not your favorite food, you're not eating a lot of, like, brogies or?
No. Pandemic.
True, true, I'm terrified, I hate hard boiled eggs, I'm terrified sometime I'm going to be forced to eat deviled eggs, I, I don't know if I can do it.
Well, that wouldn't be the worst thing you could eat.
For me, it would be, I, 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 I mean, health wise, yes, but I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't stand it, um, awesome. Uh, and, and the last words, I just keep, I keep sort of, we should have ended like eight minutes ago, I keep sort of saying new things, but.
That was great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Really fun conversation.
Totally, totally, and, you know, no matter what happens, I think an important thing too, and Go Paul, just to extend, you're saying those conversations keep happening, I mean, to me, that's the heart of what it means to keep building a broader movement, right, is to make sure individually and then as groups and organizations, you know, people may win or lose, will win or lose some campaigns, but, but, you know, that is our, that is our, our, our wellspring, you know, that is our core resource, is these networks of people and conversations. Because the next time around, right, now you know me, you know, and Divine, I'm like, I'm already like, hmm, you know, there's some prison reentry stuff around here, and you know, let's get Terrell, somebody I, I know locally, and, um, you know, there's just so much going on.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, um, ultimately, we, we all live together, right? Um, and as an eighties baby, and I say this a lot, I remember knowing people, right? Um, I could walk ten blocks and know everyone, because I'm from New York, right, so ten blocks is a long stretch, and know two to three people on every block that I walked on. I, I can't walk down State College, uh, College Ave, or even in the communities and know anyone, right? Uh, and that's one of the pushbacks of like living, uh, not having, uh, multiple dwelling homes, like, we don't know each other, like, it's, I'm not going to walk up to your private property and knock on your door, I might get shot, literally, um, but there's no community, right, and, and, and I want to, I want to see State College become a community. Ultimately, like, we, we, one of the things we talk about is, is a pedestrian mall, right, like, bikeability, or places for our families to sit and, and conversate, like, it's doable, and, and we should make that happen.
Looks like the layout of downtown screams for it, you know, it's so, it's so hard to kind of get it now on that square.